Welcome to MyTelConferencing. Please enter a participant code, then press pound. You are the only person on this conference. Please stay on the line.
Pre-agenda meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. We have two commissioners that are not able to be with us for this meeting. At this time, I'll ask our county manager if we have any adjustments to the agenda?
No, sir. We do not have any adjustments.
Okay. I may have a quick remark under new business just to share about the governor's latest update to COVID emergency order. We do have a public hearing this evening, no appointments before the board, so we can roll right into administrative matters that are appropriate for consideration for our consent agenda. And I'll let Beth, you tee those up.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item was a request from Stony Point Volunteer Fire Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number Eight and to allocate $20,000 from the East Alexander Fund Balance to assist with the purchase of equipment to supplement a recent grant award. And Mr. Kent Green is here to make this request.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, Mr. Commissioner.
How are you doing, Kent?
Very well, I hope you are.
Great.
You may be aware that the four voted tax districts prior to coming into the All County Service District maintained a fund balance. It was basically a savings account for them to purchase needed equipment throughout the year from. Stony Point has asked, I'm sorry, Stony Point has asked to withdraw $20,000 from the East Alexander Fund Balance report to assist with paying the in-kind portion of a grant that was recently received, as well as to purchase some other small tools and equipment.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Green?
Now, with the All County Fire Districts, that set all the voted districts back to zero, but it-
From a tax rate perspective, yes, sir.
Tax rate, but it did leave, like you say, fund balance available.
It did. If you remember, just a while back, we came in from Troutman and asked for about $205,000 from their fund balance to assist with a purchase of an apparatus.
What happens when that is all used up?
It will effectively be zero. There may be some small deposits based on delinquent taxes that come in, but there should not be any excessive accumulations in those fund balances.
And the only way to put money back in that voted-in district would be to change the levy from zero to something.
Correct.
Okay.
And how are they managing when they are a multi-county district like this one in Stony Point with Alexander County, which is, I guess they're still doing business under a previous operating paradigm and then ours as well?
That's correct. They are still a voted tax district in Alexander County under a similar situation here with a fund balance. This will leave about $5,000 in their fund balance account. Per our agreement, their district is about 50-50 in both the counties, so when it comes time for an apparatus replacement, we will pay 50% of that purchase, as well as 50% of their equipment purchases.
And the similar arrangements have been reached with, like-
County Line, Sheffield, Long Hickory, and Wilkes-Barre under similar agreements.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
The next item is a request from Solid Waste for approval of temporarily reducing domestic livestock mortality disposal fee to $25 per occurrence through December 31st of 2020, and Mr. Lambert is here to make this request.
All right.
So recently, our livestock producers in the county lost their most economical and physically feasible avenue for disposing of mortalities when a local rendering plant shut down. On-farm burial is still permissible, but it's not preferable. As populations grown and housing's more dense, that's just not probably the best way to go in with some of the diseases we have that can infest different domestic animals. So what we're proposing is the landfill is permitted already, and our state operating permit to accept livestock. And what we'd like to do is, while these farmers are hunting for alternatives, we would like to allow them to bring them out to the landfill and just charge them a $25 fee per occurrence, rather than a regular per-ton fee. It'll have some impact temporarily on the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund, but we only estimate if we do this for four months until these guys get something in place, it'll only be about $4,100. And the general fund can reimburse us at the end of the year when they're balancing the accounts. So what we're proposing is just to waive the customary fee in lieu of the $25 per occurrence through the end of the year, December 31st, and that'll give them a chance to research some alternatives and those kind of things.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Lambert? I know that you watch the bottom line very carefully. This is an enterprise fund and really operates based on fees collected and taxes levied. So we appreciate your working with the farmers and will certainly work to make sure you're whole. Does it look like in four months that there will be a solution or two as far as-
I understand-
-local disposition?
Some grant opportunities out there for incinerators, on-farm incinerators, like most of the poultry houses already have. And there's some research going on for composting on farm sites. I think there's a little bit of work to be done there, but there's some things going on, and the state is providing some grant money for that for the farmers.
Okay, great. Well, we do want to give a shout out to Representative McNeely, who first brought this to our attention as being a need that was, had just materialized very quickly. And so we hope that we're able to find ultimately a long-term solution. Okay, any further questions, comments?
Good.
Consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
The next item is a request from Elections for approval of Budget Amendment Number Eleven to appropriate CARES Act funding in the amount of $157,728. And Ms. Becky Gallaher is here to make this request.
The CARES Act money that we have, that we have access to is in the amount of $157,728. The CARES money can help us with our part-time salaries, our overtime, extra precinct workers, which we are having to get to deal with, the social distancing and everything else that we're having to do for the COVID advertising postage. Our postage is going to be way more than what we anticipated. I shared with them when I came in, we have entered 11,343 absentee ballot requests as of today, and we probably have another $5,000 sitting in the office waiting for us to just get in. So absentee ballots are going to be the highest we've ever had. And supplies, we're having to do signs, we're having to buy a lot of extra PPE items that are not being provided. So the CARES money would help us with this, these type of things.
While you're up here, I know you get a lot of questions about how absentee ballots will, are processed and will work, and what differences there are this year because of COVID and years past, mostly in terms of witnessing on the envelope and all. Could you share just the primary differences and inform folks what the important dates are for requesting an absentee ballot and when they would need to be mailed in order to be, make sure they get counted-
Yes.
...within that third day after the election?
Yes. The biggest differences in the absentee process this year is the fact that you only have to have one witness sign your envelope, where in the past you've had to have two witnesses or a notary. So the one witness is a huge improvement for folks. The other is that people can email, they can fax instead of mailing request forms into us, and that's been great for folks. Our email has drastically increased. The ballots can be requested, as of right now, through October 27th. So that'll be the last day that we can actually mail out anything. Of course, our early voting will start in October from the 15th through the 31st, but ballots can be mailed out. I don't recommend anybody wait until that last week just because of the postal service and it, the timeframe, getting it to them, them getting it back. If anybody does request an absentee ballot, they can have it, of course, it has to be mailed to them, but then they can hand-carry the ballot back in if it's a time crunch for them, or if they just prefer to do that. They can bring it to us, or they can take it into any of the one-stop sites, that's new this year, that will be open in October, and leave it with them, and they'll bring it to us at the office.
What are the biggest issues that you found in terms of absentee ballots being disqualified?
I don't like to say disqualified, but it delays the process a little bit if they don't provide their ID, because when you ask for an absentee ballot, you have to have a form of ID, which is the last four digits of your social security number or your driver's license. So if they don't have that on there, that will, we have to send out a letter and get that information. So it kind of slows down the process if they haven't signed it. That's another thing. If they don't provide their residence address on the form and they just send a PO box, then any, any missing information like that, date of birth, and where in the past we could call a voter and say, okay, we've got this request form for you, what's your, can you give me your information? We verified on the phone. This year, we have to stop the process for it, ask for the information, and wait for it to come back before we can continue processing that absentee ballot.
On the one witness, can a spouse, a husband-
Yes.
-and wife-
Yes. Yeah. Anybody that is 18 years old or older can be a witness, don't even have to live in North Carolina, you know? So it can, it's made it a lot easier for folks to be able to do that.
And all they are witnessing is someone has sealed the envelope, and they're, they're not witnessing them filling out the ballot?
That's correct. They're not witnessing their ballot, they're witnessing them signing their envelope, that it's their signature on the outside of their envelope. You know, and, and the theory is that they, they did see them put the ballot in the envelope, that it's theirs, but we tell voters all the time, they're just witnessing your signature. They don't have to see how you voted, so.
One question that I've had a couple times is if, what are your checks and balances relative to if someone has requested an absentee ballot and then shows up and votes in person, and then you receive that absentee ballot either before they showed up to vote or after they voted in person and you receive an absentee ballot?
That's not as likely to happen now, because in the past, we used to put everybody's name in the registration books, whether you voted early or not, or by mail. So now, if you vote early, at an early voting site, or if you vote by mail, your label's not going to go into the book, because the way the law reads is that only eligible voters for Election Day are supposed to be in the book. So we purposely leave those names out now. So if that person shows up, they don't have a label in the book. They have to then go to the paperwork person, and they'll call us, and then we'll, we'll figure out, okay, what's going on? Well, they came in to vote early. It happens sometimes with seniors where they, they just maybe don't understand the process or they've forgotten what they've done, but it's a much better check and balance there now, to be able to stop that before it happens. If it were to get through by some odd miracle on their part, when it came in and we started scanning that voter history in, anybody that votes early or by mail has already got a voter history in the system. So it's going to flash up a warning that says this person's already voted. And if you'll remember, all of the absentee ballots and all of the one-stop ballots have a number on the top of them. It's for identification, so that if we needed to go retrieve that ballot, we can at that point. So they've still only voted once. But we don't have that happen as much as we used to when every name would be in the book. And the workers just didn't catch that at the polling place.
Well, you know, your staff, under your leadership, has always run a tight ship.
Thank you.
And you have 100% confidence in how you've managed the election process, and it's fair and accurate. And of course, there's paper product to back up every vote.
That's right.
So.
That's right. And we like that.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, consent?
Consent.
Thank you. And Ms. Gallaher actually has the next item as well, which is a request from Elections for approval of Budget Amendment Number Twelve to appropriate Help America Vote Act funds in the amount of $250,000.
And this money is, like she said, from the Help America Vote Act, and it can be used for printers, scanners that we desperately need because we have an additional one-stop site. We have additional workers at our one-stop site, so the equipment is needed for them to utilize, and it can also be put in for salaries as well. So I want to take advantage of all of this federal grant money to reimburse us as much as we can.
Are you having any difficulty getting the number of volunteers that you need?
You know, it's funny, we have gotten more people, we've had more people to call us this time wanting to work. It's incredible. While we've had a lot of our workers to say they're not going to work, and you know, the age of most poll workers are in that category where they're at risk, we've had a lot to say they're not going to work, but we've also had a lot to step up and say they want to work. We have a great system with Mitchell College. We have about 75 college students that are going to help us this time. Great program, and it's worked out really good. We've, we've been doing that for a few elections, and they make really good workers, and we're seeing a lot of them come back. So that's, that's been very promising as well.
I know you're familiar with the county regulations regarding mask-wearing-
Yes.
-by customers. What's your, what's the process going to be at the poll, polling sites?
All of the workers will have a mask on and/or a face shield. They will also be sitting behind a desk shield, so that will be an additional barrier between them and the public. We'll have a social distancing person at the door. They'll only allow so many people to be in the voting places at one time. They will be handing out masks, they will give everybody hand sanitizer, they will offer gloves if they want it. We can't enforce the mask-wearing, but we can encourage it, and we will. We'll also be giving each voter a single-use pin that they will use to sign their ATV form, they will vote their ballot, and that pin will go out with them. So we're not sharing pins. We will have somebody cleaning periodically the booths. For curbside, we have plastic storage cases that we're using. They'll be able to clean those so that the voters at curbside will be better protected. Anything that we can think of, we're trying to do that. So we're trying to encourage, and I will, I will tell you all, we have had a lot of people to call, despite the fact that we have 11,000-plus requests, we've still had a lot of calls of people saying they're coming in to vote early, especially at our office. So I wanted to take this moment just to thank you all for your willingness to be able to help us out with the additional parking at the back, because I think that will be needed. But anything and everything that we can think of to social distance these folks and try to keep them safe.
The calls I'm getting, Becky, are, have you heard anything from the state as far as allowing electioneering, or do you have the authority to move the electioneering into the lower parking lot? Because I know you're probably going to have people lined up, social distancing further out.
We have not gotten guidance from the state. We've asked for it, and they say it's coming still. What I know is that they don't really want to stop that because it is a First Amendment right to be out there. However, the Board of Elections' stance on this is if we're going to the precautions that we're going to, to keep the voters safe, then we would like for some help at the, on the outside as well with the electioneering. We have been in discussion with the two-party chairs. They are concerned about the folks being, standing outside and trying to hand voters paraphernalia and cards or whatever. So they're actually talking about trying to discourage that within their own parties, and I'm hoping that that will work out.
I've had people call and ask what locations you're going to have that do not allow that.
We do, too.
By the locations, so.
Yeah.
I think we need to do a good job of advertising that early.
We can, the only thing that the law actually allows us to do is to protect the curbside voting, because that's their voting enclosure.
Right.
I, I am pretty limited from the 50-foot marker from the door, so I'm going to do my best to try to keep the electioneers away from the line, and I will, but hopefully they'll follow the party chair's decisions to maybe not be out there.
Well, thank you, Becky.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you and your staff. Great job. Consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a request from the Finance Department for approval of the amended project ordinance for Mooresville High School and Budget Amendment Number Nine to appropriate remaining funds of the project to the Mooresville Grade II School District, and Ms. Cheek is here to make this request.
Good evening. I have had a request from the Mooresville Grade II School District, in fact, that they have finished up their high school project, and there is a small amount of remaining funds, a little over $3,000, that they have asked for us to please send back to the general fund and give to them through a capital line. Typically, we move these funds to the next project, but since we don't have an open project for them to move these funds to, that's why we have a project ordinance and also a budget amendment that we're asking for approval of.
Any questions for Deb? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you. Then Ms. Cheek also has the next item, which is, which is a request from Finance Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number Ten to appropriate remaining fiscal year 2021 funding to the Children's Hope Alliance Treatment Alternatives for Sexualized Kids, which is known as the TASK Program.
Thank you. If you remember, earlier in the year, I came with a funding plan for the JCPC, and we had some unallocated funds at those time, at that time, about $56,370 that we had not found a home for yet. We went through a second RFP process, went through a second funding cycle, and determined as a unanimous recommendation from the JCPC Council to award this money to Children's Hope Alliance for their TASK Program. So we're asking for a budget amendment to be able to move that money to Children's Hope Alliance.
Any questions? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The final item on the administrative matters portion of the agenda is a request from administration for review of the proposed North Carolina Association County Commissioners or NCACC legislative goals. And this is something that our NCACC asks all counties to come up with a list of goals that will go before the NCACC to advocate to our legislature regarding goals for counties and local governments. So what we have done, which is what we typically do, is contact our department directors and ask them if they have any suggestions regarding goals relative to their performance of duties and carrying out their services to the public. And we have received some suggested goals from, from some of our department directors, and they're in your book. One thing that I will say, you have three goal suggestions from Animal Services, and really, it is making some additions or modifications to current general statute. For example, the first one, redemption of animals. Part of that request is if an owner comes and redeems an animal and we have to provide medical care to that animal, that the owner reimburses the county the medical care for that owner when they come to redeem the animal. There is another regarding deceased animals, which provides an option for owners. For example, if they rent or live in an apartment complex and cannot bury that animal on their property, because they do not own that property, that they could relinquish the animal to animal control with appropriate signatures for animal control to dispose of the animal humanely. Another one would be, just, this is more for a consistency standpoint, there's a statute regarding, it talks about owner and caretaker, and gives various definitions regarding 48 hours without notifying animal shelter of the animal's whereabouts. And for consistency's sake, the request is for 72 hours, and that is because Iredell County Animal Services must impound strays and hold them for 72 hours. So that just ties the timeframe in together for consistency's sake. Those are goal suggestions and some statute modifications that Animal Services has requested. Our Emergency Communications Department, they requested some legislation and funding to address cybersecurity. That is a huge issue, and that is something that could dramatically cripple ECOM, for example. But they have asked for additional legislation and funding to address cybersecurity assessments and needs specifically for public safety agencies and local governments. The other is they've requested to identify dispatchers to be reclassified and recognized as first responders. In some states, dispatchers are recognized as first responders, but in North Carolina, they are not. And then Emergency Medical Services, our EMS department. These are two current goals that were recommended by the NCACC, and before you, you have a printout that looks like this. Both of EMS, these are existing goals or goals that the NCACC advocated on behalf, and they are requesting for those, those goals to be continued, and basically gave a detailing of how those goals would help EMS accomplish their mission, vision, and goals, and ties it back into two of our newer programs, our Community Support Response Team through our Peer Support Specialist, and our Community Paramedic Program. So, and that is detailed in your packet as well. Also, I printed out for you the, the detailing of the goals that we reviewed previously back in 2018. And if you remember, these goals are two-year goals, so I also printed out the list of those goals that, that we approved previously. And just as a note, the first goal, the more flexibility in establishing the public school calendar, that actually was a goal that made it into the- calendar, that actually was a goal that made it into the NCACC's goal. Then, number four, Department of Social Services be removed from the requirement of the memorandum of agreement. That goal was modified somewhat, but it was actually included in this goal as well. So, we did have some goals that actually made it to the NCACC-endorsed goals as well.
In terms of EMS, there was some discussion about the legal authority to determine if someone's deceased and be able to clear the scene.
The medical examiner.
Right.
Concern, yes.
Yeah. Where are we in terms of that situation?
That is a situation that is currently, the state has a contract with a provider to perform those medical examiner duties. We did explore for EMS to perform those duties. The issue with that is we cannot pay employees and have them receive a W-2 and then contract with them to be a contracted provider. And in order for the ME duties, that must be a contracted provider duty. So, we could not have our employees performing the ME duties because that would have them being compensated as a contractor to the county and also being compensated as an employee. And we cannot do that. So, the solution to that would be if there could be a partnership with another county for their paramedics to provide ME services in our county and our paramedics to provide ME services in their county, or continue to do what we're doing right now with the state contracting for those duties and responsibilities with very clear contracts and holding that contracted provider accountable to perform those duties and responsibilities.
You could also contract with the rescue squad for paramedics that are not actually employed by EMS, correct?
You could look at doing something like that as long as they are not an employee of Iredell County.
Now, since we're talking about legislation here, the whole rub about having your local EMS paramedics being able to operate, perform that function of an ME is limited based on the contracting issue. So, if that is not a rule but a law, a legal requirement, then shouldn't we look at changing that to simply say that we should be able to have our own paramedics as part of their job make that call?
We asked that question. And the response that we received back from the state was it was a conflict of interest. For an on-duty paramedic to also perform the ME duties, there has to be a degree of separation there. So, that was actually something that we had talked to the state about and asked that. And they felt that there had to be some degrees of separation with that. So, one of the things that we had asked was if we have paramedics on duty and we assure that we have one ME per shift, and their response was no, we could not do that because you cannot wear two hats at the same time.
So, why could we not? Why could we not, if we contract with, say, the rescue squad, and you've got an ME that's not on active duty with Iredell County but is contracted and paid through the rescue squad, maybe a question for you, why could we not do that? In other words, the two hats would be if they're working actively as a paramedic and serving as a ME. So, if we call the rescue squad and they send out, say, they may have four members that are certified MEs. So, if we contract with them, or the state does, why could we not legally do that as long as they're not actively working as a paramedic at the time they're doing the ME services?
Well, they can't be on the county payroll at all. I'm not sure if by active you mean they're employed with the county or not. But if you had, if you had somebody at a rescue squad that was a paramedic for Alexander County, not employed by Iredell County and had the certification, they could contract through the state or we could contract them as an EM.
But are you sure that it's employed at all or just working actively?
No, it's an employee of the county.
Of the county.
It's an IRS ruling.
Okay.
Like, say, it's an IRS.
And there are also liability issues surrounding, which I think this may be what Ms. Jones was alluding to, but you also had to weigh the, you know, whose job is it at the scene to do the investigation, to determine whether it was a homicide, that sort of thing. And there being overlap between county employees or county departments. And there have been liability issues with that in the past with one pointing at the Sheriff's Department or, not here locally, but other cases. So, there are liability issues that we would have to evaluate there as well. But the IRS issue and the payment issue is really the biggest hurdle to get over.
So, it wouldn't be a problem, though, to contract, let's say, with Mooresville Fire Department if they have qualified paramedics to be able to perform that function?
As long as they're not a county employee and they go through the certification and they're acceptable to the state. Because really, we don't technically, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't technically contract with the medical examiner. And this is an argument that we had with the state, but that's their responsibility. We have to pay for it, but it's their responsibility to have the contract and to provide the MEs for the various counties.
That is correct. The state is the contracting entity. Iredell County is not.
And our main motive to start this was to try to get expediency in getting bodies off the roads from wrecks or accidents like that and tying up personnel waiting on that contracted service. But if I'm not mistaken, part of the downside, if we started doing ME services, was that they wanted us to do all ME services, not just tied
Correct.
to a traffic accident or something.
That is correct.
So, that was, it was kind of you do all or nothing. So, I guess the evaluation was made, we have to decide what.
Well, you know, that doesn't sound like an IRS requirement. That sounds like the state.
I agree.
That is the state requirement. The payment issue is the IRS requirement, but that issue is the state requirement. And after we analyzed this and had several, several conversations and we have gone back and forth with the state regarding this, the clearest solution at this point is to hold the contractor accountable to meet the contract requirements. And my understanding is the state is now doing that and it is improving.
Well, I'd like to see the metrics on that sometime. You know, we need to be able to show whether it's improving or not. And if it's not, you know, we need to look at these other options. This sounds like the Medical Examiner Full Employment Act with no accountability, the way it's been run. So, anyway.
Would you have a, I have a question. Would you have a desire to go to closed session and allow us to review some of these NCACC goals and priorities, maybe after that, before the seven o'clock meeting? Because I'm sure our seven o'clock should be short.
I don't think we do it in closed session.
No, no, I'm talking about look at this after we're finished with closed session before we meet at seven.
Oh, well.
You haven't had a chance to read all these, is my point. I didn't know. If you wanted to do that or just keep going now, I didn't know.
Well, what's our suspense date on this?
September the 21st. So, it's presented tonight and we can actually adopt and approve at our next meeting in order to meet that deadline. I'm pretty sure the deadline is the 21st to actually have those submitted to the NCACC.
Maybe we'll look at them when we get back in. We'll roll the fly.
Actually, I apologize, it's September the 30th. So, we could actually approve at our next commissioner meeting.
Yep. Well, it'll give us time to review that and also our two absent members.
Right, sure.
Well, we'll just, Item Seven, then note that it has been received for review and future action.
Yes. You can take this for informational purposes or you can table it to the next meeting, whichever you prefer.
Well, I think we'll table it till the next meeting for action.
Okay.
For inclusion in the consent. Everybody good with that?
Good.
Can you, in one of your updates, in the meantime, can you identify, as you did, some of the ones that were already in the packet for last year that we could continue? And any new recommendations that you've already identified?
Yes.
I think we have a raw milk issue.
No.
And the licensed soil scientist is probably, I don't know if that's still a hanging chad or not.
It is, but I do not, my opinion would be that's not something that's going to get resolved.
I know the broadband issue is going to be a top priority from the organization.
Yeah, I think that is probably
statewide.
Very important.
Yes. And that's one that EMS pointed out as well, the broadband. And being able to get service anywhere in the county, to be able to send those 12 leads while they're in transport to the hospital, that's just, that's key.
That's become a forefront even more so than normal with the school.
Specifically with the remote learning, the distance learning and needing to have that access, absolutely.
Okay. Well, anything further? Do you want to give us a preview of the county's manager's report or just surprises?
The only thing is just a reminder about our new PEG channel, which is on Spectrum TV Channel 1306. So, I know that some people are still tuning in to the previous channel, but the new channel is 1306 on Spectrum. Spectrum TV is a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week informational channel for county government, Iredell County government.
And you may want to mention that we're not taking any animals right now, I believe, for airline due to the
We are, my understanding, I'm looking to Mr. Pierce to clarify if that is actually the case.
If you could just update that at the seven o'clock hour.
Okay. We can certainly do that.
What the status is.
Okay.
Okay. We'll now move into a closed session for items related to attorney-client pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 Subsection A, Subsection 3, as well as economic development pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 Subsection A, 4. We are closed session.